Well, joining us-
It's certainly not conventional.
Joining us at the table on the presentation on proposed standards for the preparation of teachers of industrial and technology education are Sally Vaughn again, Flora Jenkins, as you know, our director, and Tom Bell from our office of professional prep.
So you have before you the proposed standards, and these are the results, as is the typical process for Flora's unit to do, is to bring in a number of stakeholders and have them reviewed by experts at the teacher prep institutions, intermediate school districts. So with that, I will turn it over to Flora and to Thomas.
Thank you. Good morning. And thanks for the opportunity to be able to present to you the revised industrial and technology education endorsement standards. As you may know, a few years ago, the superintendent had a work group called the Teacher Preparation Policy Study Group, and one of their suggestions was that we take a look at all of our endorsements and see if there's a possibility that we could reduce or eliminate some endorsements. And what we've done is combined the industrial technology endorsement with the technology and design endorsements to make them one and revise the standards to reflect that. It used to be the old endorsement was the industrial arts endorsement, and that covered a lot of the things that students would learn in shop and woodworking and things like that. And then, as technology advanced and grew and became more part of the industrial arts, we came up with the technology and design endorsement. And so now to have these two endorsements come back together and really get those teachers trained in how to use this advanced technology, also look at the professionalism involved in teaching students in those various areas. So that's why we've done this, and I'm going to let Thomas just kind of talk to you a little bit about that group process and what happened with that and how these two groups of teachers and professionals out in the career area and working with our career and technology or career and tech ed folks here at the department, how this whole thing kind of evolved. And so, Thomas, if you can kind of give a brief overview of that process.
Sure. In 2009, roughly March, I think was the month, we brought together 23 folks from around the state, including staff from MDE, both in our office and career and technical education, and had a discussion on the future of industrial technology and technology and design. And through that discussion, we talked about emerging trends in the field, how to make the endorsement areas more vibrant and applicable to today's curriculum. And ultimately, the result of that conversation concluded with the merging of the two endorsements into one to assist with the preparation of teachers in being more marketable in this area and allow them to align themselves more to the current curriculum happening in K- well, 612. These standards were drafted similar to most of our standards that we've been putting forth in the last few years. Standard one is content. Standard two is addressing career cluster knowledge, which is the career and tech ed relationship. Standard three is instruction and pedagogy. Four is assessment. Five is professionalism. And standard six is technology and content-specific technology. One of the things in standard three that I want to draw your attention to is the new language, I think it's standard 3.7, which addresses the common core standards in preparing these teachers to be aware of how their content, so current educational technology, is related to math, science, social studies, and English language arts. And so that was something that the committee was very interested in adding to this. That is something that is new to this field and will help them team teach, essentially. That's the hope, is that they will be allowed to team teach and have that content knowledge. So I look forward to your questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Board members.
Well, I could say-
Kath and Nancy.
I thought that was a really good addition. I just, first of all, I think it's really encourage, I'm encouraged that you're looking at ways of combining these. So that was really good. And I thought that including that reference to the standards, the common core standards, was really a good addition. So I really appreciated that. So I thought it was really good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy.
I likewise appreciated the way you streamlined all of this together. I do have a question on those standards that do not have a level of proficiency or are not given, that it will either be passed, no pass, but are in a gray screen, at least on my footprint out. Could you explain how that came to be?
Typically, the ones that are the gray screened are not reviewed because they're the greater category, and then the elements within that are actually the ones that the institutions provide documentation to. So, for example, 1.0 is the catch-all, and then everything else is the layers that-
And then 1.1 is still gray screened?
Correct. Yes. Because that's talking about the content knowledge and specifics, and then the content knowledge, the elements within the content knowledge are broken down in 1.1, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, etc.
So the ability to apply, those are the key words to me.
Correct.
The ability to apply would be under your core content.
Correct.
All right. That helps me out tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Well, well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move right to discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I have questions on the SES.
Okay.
Or are we just going to go in order?
No, you're welcome to. Welcome to jump right in. So Mary Ann, please.
Okay. Actually, I've got a few questions. Is Linda, Linda, oh.
Linda, here.
I had a question on that one too.
We're trying to get the mics up a little bit. I asked Marty. It seems like they're lower than usual.
Yep.
Although we're all such outspoken people.
I had a question on that one too.
Mary Ann, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. Do the SES programs have to go through a district formed as an SES?
Mary Ann, could you turn around this way so I could hear you? Sorry? She can't hear you.
Linda, come up to the table so Mary Ann can talk to us.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't you come on in?
Otherwise, so you don't talk into the mic.
Anything on the mics that just not, just seem lower than the last few years? I don't hear the president.
Okay. I'll try again.
Which one are you asking about now, Mary?
Under discussion, under F, item F, the third item.
The third, F3.
The SES programs. Those are mostly after-school programs.
Tutoring programs.
And what I was wondering is, when a district has an SES program, does it have to go through an SES provider, or can the district itself start an SES program?
The district can start an SES program, but has to apply, just like any other SES provider.
Oh, okay.
And go through this same process in order to be approved to be an SES provider.
Okay.
Obviously, in a district where you're already suffering from difficulties, you want to make sure that they have an innovative mechanism in order to provide extra services.
So does the state currently have a number of districts that are providing that?
I don't have the actual data with me, but very few, if any.
Would you know offhand if Detroit does?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I can check and let you know.
Okay. Thanks. And then, it was mentioned in the article that the effectiveness is measured, or that there's an evaluation process. Could you run through what that process is?
We have an external provider. We've gone through an RFP process, and they're evaluating whether or not the services of those providers, of the SES-approved providers, are yielding any results. And the impact so far is not of high quality and is not of universal effectiveness.
So what happens then? Are these companies decertified, or?
There are two pieces that go on there. The decertification of a company that's applied may be because of other issues where they do not, they do not abide by the contracts and the agreements that we have with them. We don't have a contract, and we have agreements with them about how they can operate and what they can do and not do. So that can be one way that they can become decertified. If we have sufficient evidence that any one provider is not doing well in the services they provide, then we do go back and decertify, if you will, or take them offline. However, with the evaluations we have, it's very difficult to line the students up with the actual, we're usually looking at aggregate results.
So do you look at comments from parents or teachers?
All the time. We get-
And they're taken into account then?
Yes. Yes. We get reports back all the time. In fact, we have letters from the public regularly that are responded to.
Now, on the application process. I've been contacted by some people. And the transmission is by computer.
Correct.
There's no hard copy backup that's called for. And I understand there have been some glitches. What allowances are made in those cases?
We're only aware of one glitch, which was according to the applicant. However, no one else suffered from that same difficulty at that point in time. Certainly, if someone were to have notified us immediately of a problem, we would work with them on it.
But say they didn't know about it.
Yeah. So we will work with someone when we know about the problem immediately.
Okay.
We have other applications where we have entities applying, for instance, for the School Improvement Grant and things like that, where they are searching with us regularly and will notify us if they're having difficulty applying, and staff will remain after work to help them through that situation. So whenever we're aware of that, we try to accommodate it.
But according to the case I heard about, they did not realize that it had not gone through. So do you see a possibility of requesting hard copy as an alternative?
I would hesitate to go to a hard copy alternative, but backup, we certainly can-
Backup is what I'm thinking of.
We can go to a backup if that's necessary. With there being only the one glitch, I question the necessity, but that could be entertained.
Okay.
Linda, to Mary Ann's point a little more, for me to understand.
Sure.
Is it possible that they, that they wouldn't know it was submitted? What would maybe, I'm trying to understand that myself, because this happened in this case. You seem to infer that, well, they have to know that it wasn't.
Most schools are, because we're using the MEGS system, schools are usually aware if an application has gone through or if it has backed off, as are providers utilizing that same sort of system. And will tell us, they'll call us and say, "I'm having trouble getting this to transmit or getting this to submit." So we're not clear in this instance what happened specifically that created the dilemma for them.
Well, they're not either.
I recognize that.
According to them. And we're not aware of it evidently until they were rejected.
A solution, which is being proposed here, is that we ask them to also submit to us at the same time a paper copy. And then we have their paper copy on file, and they can resubmit if we find that they've got a glitch.
I think that would be great.
They have to know that there's something wrong with it, and they didn't know it?
Yeah.
Isn't that the-
I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand, because I think part of this, I think this was an authentic case. I know a little bit about this one.
Right.
I do think that if you don't have some remedy like a hard copy, you could also have some that just missed deadlines and then say it didn't go through and all that. I mean, there's a potential for, on this point, Liz, please, and then Kathy.
Well, it just seems to me, you know, when you, when you do your campaign filing, you get an immediate number back that says it was received, time, get a confirmation number, instant return online. And it would seem to me that if we had some system that whenever something came, you had an instant reply received, then the sender would know within seconds whether it went through or not. And, you know, I really worry about starting to request all these paper copies, because I think they just fill, fill chairs.
In truth, what we really ask them for is a CD.
Yeah.
As opposed to a piece of paper, we just take the CD.
Yeah. Well, they could do a CD.
What is it?
But I think an instant receipt number-
We would have to explore that with DIT.
With DIT, but that might be another backup that would be even more efficient.
Some, some sort of a backup. Right.
So we'll do one of those, and if, the DIT would be the ideal one, but if they can't do that, it'll be the backup, and we won't have that. I think it was Kath and Nancy.
Well, I had just one more. And I guess this kind of is the end result of all of this. I know there's no appeal process, but maybe there should be. Or some way for, or someone for people to talk to.
Well, who, in the spirit of that question and how we might do that, you started to say earlier, but remind us who's making that call now and how?
The current process is that the applications come in and are reviewed by a committee. We have one staff member who works on SES, and that's the only person who spends much time on it. If there are any issues, then of course they're raised up through, through staff to my level. But in, we're dealing with a specific case here, and I hesitate to get into all of the details of that specific case. We were satisfied that staff had taken appropriate action. Can we look at an appeal case? Yes. A situation, yes. We just simply will have to take more staff time to put that in place, and we can do that, if necessary.
Well, we're the appeal process right here.
Is there no appeal process?
Well, within the form as it is, there's no appeal process. Within the plan, I'm happy to hear you say that, that there is an opportunity.
Staff raising.
I've been contacted by two different groups, and both were disturbed that there was no appeal process. So I'm glad you're in place and that this is now a possibility.
We can, we can work towards it.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Kath, and then Nancy.
Sometime ago, we developed our own criteria for, for the supplemental service providers, a number of years ago. And I know now the, what these criteria are defined in law, and I just wonder if our criteria are covered by these criteria.
I have to plead ignorance to that right now, and I don't know the answer to that. I would, I can find out for you.
Would you?
Sure.
Because I wonder if there, I want to make sure that the criteria we thought were important-
Anyone else, you're all looking.
I didn't hear the question.
Well, the question is, is the criteria that's established in law the same as what the board established?
They seem, I mean, they're sensible criteria, but I wondered if-
For SES.
If there's something that we did that's not included here. It should be added.
SES providers are part of Title I, and the provisions for who can or cannot be a provider are pretty much federal guidance. And then it's up to the state to develop an approval system, which is what we've done.
Well, that's what you meant. Before it was in federal, we had passed state board.
Yeah.
And so what she's asking is, do they parallel, or are they, are they?
They're not identical.
Thank you.
I mean, maybe we need to find out where they're not, but I think what I hear you saying is they jeopardize the funding if we don't follow the federal way.
Right.
But we still should know. It would be comforting to know that, yeah, they're virtually the same, or no, here's a big glitch that's different, and then maybe we would advocate.
When we first discussed it and brought it to the board, we included the idea that SES providers really should use, use certificated teachers in the provision of that service. And that is not part of the federal requirement, and they were not allowed to put that into our, our criteria.
We were not allowed?
No.
This came, No Child Left Behind is what created this opportunity, required it. And, you know, when, this is us interpreting, No Child Left Behind, to provide some sort of quality contours. As you know, every Tom, Dick, and Harry and school district was interested in providing these supplemental services, because there's money to be made. Our job is to put even more quality assurances on who can do that, so that they're actually educating, not providing fly-by-night tutoring.
That babysitting, right.
Right. That's well stated.
Well, that's what I, is there some way, we can still, we can't add that, or we won't get funded? I would think that if we followed, we had at least their minimum, we could add our own additional criteria.
I would love to be able to add that criteria. However, at this time, until ESEA is reauthorized to the current guidance stand.
Is there some way we can lobby when they do No Child Left Behind?
At least it's making notes, as you say.
Put it in reauthorization.
Yeah. That's what, that's what the purpose of this is, is so that we know what we want to change.
Yeah, so that we ought to be pushing that at the, at the federal level.
Mm-hmm. Lisa.
Well, when that, we hear you loud and clear. So when that, when that comes to pass, and that'll, you know, there's some debate about when we're going to actually do the reoff, but when that's done-
From my money, they could eliminate this and put the money in something else. The effectiveness is not proven.
That, that very concept is under discussion.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Yes.
I just, there's almost more of, I think John captured the words pretty well.
Tom, Dick, and Harry, right.
Tom, Dick, and Harry, fly-by-night. I mean, this is a protecting process for our kids, because what ends up happening is you have some really good providers, and then you have some that you just shake your head and we're going to have to-
Just like Trevor.
We're living within those constraints right now, but I'm confident in reminding you of a few minutes ago, and I think Linda talked about the evaluation of those. I didn't, did, to Mary Ann's question, are there some that have been decertified?
There are, but not to, not because of the evaluation component, because it's very difficult for us to get the child, the UIC for the child against the SES provider.
Uh-oh.
You've got to go in and do that, and so we can't do that. It has to be a more global evaluation.
Okay.
So, but the bottom-line results across the state are not stellar.
Yeah. So even from that perspective, it gets to Kath's point about, you know, maybe a redirection of that money in its entirety, anyway. Nancy, please.
If we accomplish what Kathy's talking about, probably my question's moot, but I'll, I'll ask it anyway. When we do the evaluation, do we stick strictly to the data that we have on the child's, or the aggregates increase or lack thereof of knowledge because of, and the effect that the SES has had? Or do we also look at how the interaction between the school district and the SES has taken place?
We look at both of those.
Okay. Because it seems to me that the communication, certainly my experience has been that oftentimes the SES doesn't know what to ask the school district in order to make good decisions. And so I'm just kind of wondering how that's working, too.
It's a difficult piece. And in some districts, in my experience and what I've seen to date, is that where it's a smaller situation, it's a much more manageable, and the flow of information goes back and forth much more fluidly. When we're talking about larger districts and a variety of schools utilizing the same provider, it becomes more cumbersome and more difficult.
One of the, one of the things that comes to mind that I've witnessed oftentimes with SES providers is they will ask for the student's grades, not their MEEP results. And one would hope that they were reflective of each other, but truly, they usually are not.
Very different.
And so if, if an SES is focusing on a child's grades as opposed to their MEEP results, then their, the bang for the buck is not theirs, shall we say.
Right.
And so that's why I'm wondering what kind of evaluation is done on the communications piece between what's really important in a child's assessment, or an assessment of a child's ability versus what's a parent, if you, I think.
Right. Right. And the communications to, piece is key and not always present.
Right. Thank you.
And just as an aside, I think I'd add to what you said to, about with Lisa's focus on this. My own association, CCSSO, is very focused on this as a broader area, and I'm sure that NAGB is, and your input there is going to be important. As many large national groups, you know, I think, I mean this kindly, but I, once in a while, when I even hear intermediates and others trying to influence policy, these are pretty much done by large groups that have been able to say, we've got, in effect, let's say, all of the school board nationally on, or most of them on board for a given issue. And if it's also with CCSSO, which typically it would be, then, then that's what's really going to amount to some of the changes in this. So any encouragement I could give you to get NAGB to also weigh in on this as you see fit.
Maybe NASB, too?
Yeah. NASB, sorry. NASB.
I was wondering.
I was trying to figure out the-
Yeah. I forget what NAGB even is now.
Well, there was a NAGB.
There is a NAGB. I think you meant NASB.
Yeah. What is NAGB now? I'm drawing a blank.
National Association of Governing Boards, isn't it?
National Assessment-
Oh, NAGB, yeah.
National Assessment Governing Boards, excuse me.
Okay, well.
Almost had it right.
Get it, yeah. But I mean, that's where this is really done. And I think sometimes we have a lot of energy at, at more local levels, and as if that's going to make, if you happen to be in a spot, though, where you can influence, I found out in my association, the key thing is influencing the legislative committee.
Yep.
And you don't need many people to influence the legislative committee, which in turn, that's why I'm staying on the board of CCSSO and re-upped, because you have more of an opportunity to have that impact, and they're not waiting for all 50 states.
Oh, yeah.
And then if you can have CCSSO with a given impact, that's going to be a lot different than a handful of us or four ISDs or something like that.
But on the other hand, if you have access to a person on the Education Committee, it helps.
Yeah.
It helps.
It helps.
Yes. It does. Sometimes one person can get something, you know, in legislation.
But I would, you know, we've even tested this at CCSSO, and when you really ask what are, try to name those things that have been different because of that, I think they're fewer than we think.
Well, they might be fewer, but there are some of them.
I mean, we're trying to find one. We really, as we've been examining the way we do this.
It's probably not in either or, it's probably in both.
Right. I think we could try everything.
Dan, please.
I don't know if we were, well, I don't mean to cut our conversation short on the SES question. I had a question, though, about the School Improvement Funds grant criteria, if it's all right to-
Please.
So as I understand it, then, these funds would be allocated to schools on the positionally lowest achieving list, who have an approvable school reform turnaround plan. The question is whether there are schools on that list that did not submit an approvable plan. And how many are there, and where are they roughly? How does that shake out?
There are a handful that did not have approvable plans. And they all are eligible to apply in our next round of funding, and so we would work with them to get an approvable plan for the next round of funding. The majority of the schools, however, that submitted plans last spring to us, did submit approvable plans. We ran out of money before we could actually award it all. And so we think this might be a good opportunity for us to be able to support them now, rather than waiting going forward. And then they can still apply for that second round of funding.
Just, was there a pattern around these schools that did not have approvable plans? Do they tend to be, you know, are they all Detroit? Are they all over the place? Was there a particular thing that they tended to miss more often than not?
They were evenly split, and the majority of them just did not have a coherent plan. And for instance, I'm just going to pull a few out of my, you know, my memory, but there was the one that wanted a flight simulator and yet was not a specialized school for aviation. And there was nothing in the plan that addressed the need for a flight simulator. We had a little, that kind of thing. It was, it was more of that sort of thing than anything else.
My own, I don't want to say investigation, but look into this a little bit more is, it was interesting to me that one district where one school was approved and one was not, you could see even in my, from my view, less expert than, than Linda and some others who were looking at it, that one was clearly approved and had a plan, and the other one was just a bunch of programs that didn't have any continuity. And I think what I think you and Mark, Linda and Mark and others have done very well is in some of these invites where people have come in from the districts to learn about, I think they're getting more and more, you have to have a coherent plan. This isn't based on just patching together three or four things that have no coherence and then expecting actually to improve. So I'm more confident that in that one district, because I talked to superintendent through this a little bit, that it did seem odd to me even at first that one would have kind of an outstanding plan and another one was, was subpar. But I think that's- But I think that's part of this process as they're all learning through it, you know, a little bit of this. We also, as you know, Dan, I think we had the discontinuity of the timing this year because the fed timing was different than the state law timing on the reform. That's all going to be synchronized from here on in. But I was very pleased with the way this one superintendent responded because then he in turn looked at the, in more depth at these plans and realized, you know what, one, I get exactly why your folks were not, were trying to coach them to approve the plan for the next round.
Was really, just to be clear then, just wanted to make sure that our decision to fund, provide this additional funding to folks who had approvable plans wasn't inadvertently penalizing a bunch of rural districts or, you know, high poverty urban districts or what have you that, so I'm satisfied.
Our plan is just go right on down the list until we run out of money. And where we might have some difficulties, we'll do what we normally do with a grant and negotiate with them, but, you know, here are some problem areas for us, would you please make some changes and then when you can do that, we'll be happy to release the dollars to you.
But let's, I mean, can we just maybe, I think Dan's being appropriate in the way he's asking this, but for example, there were lots of them approved in Detroit and some not approved in Detroit.
Correct. And there are some coming up on the list that are approvable in Detroit that would receive this money and some further down the list that would not.
Because right out of the block, you have the disproportionate, I mentioned Detroit only because out of the total universe of approvable, half are Detroit. And of the half that came from Detroit, about how many percentage-wise were?
There are six schools, six schools out of 28 that were awarded that are Detroit.
Okay. And then how many totally were awarded statewide?
Twenty-eight.
Oh, 28.
Six of the 28 were Detroit. It was disproportionate based on the number of schools that were in the pool. Those schools have now had a chance though to write another plan because of the PLA list and we're finding that those plans are much more substantive and more, in much better shape.
That's great.
These were the ones, if you recall, that I had sent a letter to both the board president and Robert Bob saying we required them to sign, for both of them to sign these. And a little bit of the irony of today's controversy and yesterday's is why some of us were thinking upfront that sooner or later, this is going to be a self-determination issue again for a board in Detroit. And no matter where you might have been on a mayor control or not a mayor control or a board or whatever, our view from the beginning has been you need this team working together on these plans because that's what's going to ultimately be. There won't be a financial manager at some point, there will be a board. Well, for a while, we weren't, you know, we weren't sure if there was going to be a mayor issue, but, so I think that's also been helpful that it's, if I may just say so on our part, that it's forced them to kind of get together and I think they've done that in a better fashion on this more current PLA round.
I think, just one more thing that you need to keep in mind, these dollars will go to these schools immediately and let them get started now where the SIG II dollars won't be available to them until much later. And so, we're hoping that this helps the students to get some services sooner rather than later and not have to wait until the next set of funding is available to them.
Kath, please.
I wanted to ask Linda, when you say you go down the list until you run out of money, what's the list?
Of the original schools.
Who's on top of the list and who's at the bottom?
Well, I don't have all of that with me and it's divided based on the ratings that the reviewers gave the applications. And so, where we stopped, the next school on that list is not a Detroit school, but is in the metro area. I just happen to know that one and then we just keep going down the list across the state and trying to provide the dollars to them.
Based on reviewer points.
It's based on the points though.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to find out. How does the list-
These are one-time AR dollars, so it's not something that we can continue to award and we thought this might be a good opportunity to provide some support to those schools.
So, I'm sorry, let me clarify.
Please.
Now, I've got another question.
Okay.
And I guess this is just around the criteria, so I may be skipping ahead a little bit, but bear with me if you would. So, 26 schools were funded with a school improvement grant funds?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry. These funds would go to the remaining schools on the list, 29 to whatever, who submitted approvable plans, split it, divided equally between those schools. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so, the only schools who would not have any funding at this point to do any of the school improvement work, any additional funding would be those that did not submit an approvable plan.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And there was, if I may say, I mean, there was some tactics going on, I think, by some superintendents on whether or not to apply for a grant and what, if they, and I'm not judging that, I'm just saying, they live with their own decision as to whether or not they submitted a plan or not. I think some of them thought they'd never be on the PLA list, that they'd get off by then frankly, so they didn't apply for that. And then they're scrambling when they end up on the PLA list and again, I'm not going to judge that other than to say they're responsible for their own actions. That's a little bit of what's created some controversy, but thanks for that question and clarifying it. Other questions on-
But that means then that there are some of the schools that really need help that are not getting funded.
And the community-
And they probably need help the most if they can't come up with an approvable plan.
Approvable plan, yeah.
Well, no, in this case, they didn't even, the case I'm talking about, they didn't even submit a plan.
Oh, well.
That you have some that chose to not even apply.
Well, that's a problem. They need help too.
Yep.
What I do hear though, Kathleen, is that that list of schools that did not have approvable plans is pretty randomly distributed based on the original list of persistently lowest achieving schools, which gives me some comfort. I do agree with you that that does leave a whole bunch of schools and students who are desperately in need-
Yes.
-out of the mix. It probably, from a policy perspective though, to provide funding to schools to implement school improvement plans that don't have an approvable school improvement plan doesn't, isn't, you know, isn't a wise use of resources. So, let's encourage them and it sounds like we are doing so, to get, to have them put a school improvement plan together that is implementable and they'll get some support.
The next round of funding, the training for that begins the 5th of January. We're bringing the schools in, asking them to bring their plans that they've already submitted. We'll start working with them to turn that now into an approvable school improvement grant application.
To be blunt, I mean, if someone has submitted a plan with very low points on this scale, I think there should be questions asked at a local level of how that happened. You know, I mean, it's, the review process is pretty unbiased and so, that's, to me, I'm more, I would have the same feeling about how some of these kids are left now without the appropriate resources and I would and have done this with some superintendents and principals said, you know, that was your responsibility to get in a plan that would have actually had some consequences to it and you did not do so.
They need to be offering some assistance in grant writing, yeah.
But some of this is even, you know, the same district, yeah. So, there's even some that thought this should have just been equally divided or prorated or something, but the problem is if, and I don't even want to paint a too specific an example, but there are some that is very much what you just said, Dan, that you could fund that on whatever an equal basis might be and there was no way that that funding was actually going to have an impact based on that plan.
Okay, but that leaves, begs the question, how do we help those kids?
Well, we don't through this grant.
No.
And that's, they're responsible for that.
Okay, is there some other way that we-
And I'm always feeling a little bit like we're, that our staff-
Is there any other avenue for us to help that district or that school? I mean, these kids are left hanging.
Not because of any action of the staff that I work with. That's what I'm trying to-
No, I'm not saying it is. I'm just asking, what do we do?
You get the local board to be responsible and push them to make the decisions.
Right. Where's the local board? Where's the local administrator? Where's the local superintendent? We're all a local controlled district, state. We hear that all the time. Why is the state mandating this and that? And then when they submit subpar, awfully subpar proposals, then we, you know-
Well, you know, does the board know, the local board get all of the information without our telling them that? Do we tell?
That's a good question.
Do we give them the information? Because the superintendent probably wouldn't tell them.
I tell you everything. But, no, that's a good point actually. Maybe it's a CC to the board president on the, Mary, Alice, and then-
On the redesign plan, a letter is sent to the superintendent and the board president.
Oh.
First of all, telling them, this is your deadline, you have to send it. And then, second of all, after it's sent and approved, disapproved, changes required or whatever, this is what happened when your plan was sent. So, that information is shared with your-
And with the school improvement grant applications, the letter was sent initially to the superintendent. The application had to be signed by the superintendent and the board president and the response went back to the superintendent. However, in that whole process, we asked for a preliminary application and we read it and gave them feedback in order to improve their application for the final reading.
Oh, that's good.
Large, Detroit chose not to exercise that and other school districts did as well. And so, if they didn't want our feedback, then they find themselves in the dilemma of they didn't get the technical assistance that was available to them.
Maybe we should send a copy to the local newspaper.
You know, we have, on a serious note, we've talked at our Supes Group meeting at length about how much, particularly with the staffing issues, how much do we become more and more what we've heard the board talk about, which is a light of day institution and then let local people make decisions based on. I can tell you, a very high performing district that I mentioned, I might have mentioned more specifically, but they have two high schools and they're trying to figure out why their high schools are so different in this percentile. That's a great discussion. And there are some issues that would lead one to believe in that local district that one might have a harder time being at the same, but at least it's putting back to them the whys and what can we do and I think the light of day is really a smart point and can help us, I don't know that directly to newspapers much, but certainly board presidents and Cassandra, then Liz.
Well, to that point, are these now public documents where a school that did not make the grade can now see one from a school that did and compare and contrast?
They're all posted on our website. By federal guidance, we had to post all the applications once they've been read and awarded or not.
We ought to let people know that. They might not be aware of that.
I think a good thing we're hearing is virtually a CC on everything to board president. And there's no downside or an alert to say if you come to our, very much in the spirit of the last two Supes Group meetings where we're trying to get light of day, we've been thinking about these strategies. What do you push out? Because one thing to have rich information on a website, it's another thing that if people don't know it's there or don't know how to easily use it, you have to push it out. And we're trying to think through, with Marty's division in particular, how that we can push out meaningful information that would encourage someone to click, not just, you know, because I've even found myself at times, I think I'm less guilty right now, but maybe two years ago I would have said, well, it's on our website. Now, I'm more conscious when I hear enough feedback to say, uh-oh, it's not enough that it's on our website. Let's get this out.
People don't know it's on the website.
Yeah. But it's a strategy, a push-out strategy. Yes, Liz?
Well, going to this information sharing thing, which I think is really important, you know, I'm not a big fan of competition for dollars when it's the people most in need having to compete because they usually have the least resources to compete. You know, writing federal grants or things that comply with federal guidelines is a skill and a lot of districts may not have that resource at hand and I, grieves me that to see some districts paying big bucks for consultants to help write these things because the money is going to consultant, not to the classroom. But it seems we got a partner in Michigan Association of School Boards and I think a conversation of leadership of this board with the leadership of the Michigan Association of School Boards telling them that at the local level, there are these opportunities, some of the districts availing themselves of it, some of them not, some of them needing skills in grant writing. And it seems to me a project of the MASB could be some grant writing classes for their members that could be helpful in making local decisions out there. I mean, it is true, it's a local controlled state, but there's ways to empower the local control to do it. And I really think it would be wonderful, I see at the federal level, we're moving more and more to a competition for educational resources and the more competitive it gets to, you know, at that level, the more our local people, ourselves and our local people are going to need the skills to write successful grants. So, let's team up and see if we can get the local boards up to, with those skills to help their own districts.
Yep, makes sense.
To that point though, MASB does have classes in their annual and their regional conferences on grants writing.
I know.
But what they don't have, which I think we could encourage them, is how to assess the results of those. Because this is all about where are the grants that you can go and write for. This isn't about what do you do when you're refused or when it's not successful or when you weren't part of the party or whatever. And so, I think that that bent needs to be brought up.
Broaden it out and, and not everyone goes to their training either.
No.
I think sometimes those who need it least go and those who need it most are not able to for all the other complicating factors, money.
Can I suggest concretely on this one that we do a push-out identifying the website to superintendents and board presidents for the review of the proposals and that we do that tomorrow and at least they can click on and get to it. Cassandra, you had something?
No.
Oh, okay, good.
That'd be great.
Are we good on that?
Yep.
Okay.